Well, it's now nineteen hundred, so we'll call the meeting to order. Commission's meeting first of January, this being zero six January twenty twenty. So welcome, uh, thank you for being here. Before we do the invocation and the pledging allegiance, I'd like to, for everyone to stand, if you can, bow your head, and we have to take a few moments in silence and remember to our commission's rule. Thank you. Commissioner Hall.
Slavos Rye. Happy Father's week coming here tonight. Pleased to know all the blessings you've stayed on each of us throughout the last year and as we enter twenty twenty, help us always work for the betterment of mankind. We ask for your, um, favor of our national and state and local leaders, help them work for the common good, and help us join hands in what unites us and not divides us, and let us work to for the betterment of all. We also like to know that Commissioner Jordan is watching us, and let us carry on his legacy of always listening to our constituency, coming to the table prepared, and be willing to take stands on issues, but not be divisive. All these things we ask in thy name what I say, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God with which you sanctify, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does everyone have an opportunity to view the agenda?
I may make a motion that we approve the amendment as correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Very none, then so approved. Now, for our agenda. Does everyone have an opportunity to look at the agenda, any, you know, changes in the agenda?
Yes, sir. I would like to add, under announced delegations, Mary Ann Pittman with the census, and then under new business of the light class item, the recommendation for the filling of the vacancy left by Commissioner Jordan.
All in favor of those changes, may I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve them and the agenda as suggested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Very none? Are we gonna move that, uh, as B and C under announced delegations?
The numbering does not matter for the purposes of record keeping, if that's the question.
That's right.
You're welcome.
Our, the announced delegations.
Aunt Holly's first.
Good evening, Chairman Freeman, Gates County Board of Commissioners. I have the task of presenting the Gates County Community Child Protection Team Annual Report according to General Statute, North Carolina General Statute seven B fourteen oh six. At this time, I would like for the Gates County CCPT members that are present to please stand. We have with us a social work supervisor, Dennis Parker, Gates County DSS, and that is Chief Stormy Butts from Gates County Regional Medical Services, thank you. I would like to point out, we do have a copy of the annual report. I would like to point out on the bottom of page four, a little report to the Board of County Commissioners, where it states that in January of each year, a copy of the report to the Board of Commissioners will be sent to the Division, and that is the Division of Social Services. DSS directors were informed in, um, March of twenty eighteen that this report is due to the Division by January thirty first of each year, and our CCPT consultant is Melody Meeks. On page five in this report, note that there were changes in membership in twenty nineteen, and so that the audience can hear our name, those, um, members. Yours truly serve as the DSS Director slash Community Child Protection Team Chair, Dennis Parker who's present, DSS Social Work Supervisor, Keisha Milton and Danielle Mundt are the two CPS, uh, social worker investigative and assessment treatment social workers at Gates County DSS, the Sheriff, Ray Campbell, Audrey L. C. Powell, the DA's office, Mrs. Leiana Taylor represents, uh, the Gates County DSS Board, Jeremy Wright, Gates County Schools, Hope Illy, Trillium Health Resources, Catherine Foreman, District Administrator, Gaudia M. Lighton, Karen Riddick, Alamo Regional Health Services, who also serves as the Child Fatality Prevention Team Chair for Gates County, Bill Wynn, Gates County Emergency Management, Janet Stone Nielsen, Alamo Hope Line, Kristy Conklin, Parent Representative, Chief Butts, Gates County Emergency Medical Services, Angela Charlton, Alamo Alliance for Children and Families, and Mrs. Cameron Butts, Gates County Medical Examiner. Um, Sheriff Campbell was appointed by the Gates County Board of Commissioners to the Gates County CCPT on January second, twenty nineteen. He has designated Deputy Andy Perrone, um, as designated. She is also the School Resource Officer, I believe, at Central Little School. Also on page five, under the type and number of cases reviewed by the CCPT, CFPT, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there was no child fatality referred to our team by the State of North Carolina to be reviewed. It is also a wonderful feeling to know that the decisions made by the Department of Social Services, Child Protective Services Staff, that all decisions that we have made, they have not been any concerns by the North Carolina Division of Social Services, Program Rex, and I feel that I need to applaud, because across this nation, every now and then, you hear about some child that has been, um, that had died, and if DSS has been involved in it, there is no problem with them putting that DSS on blast. So we are truly blessed here in Gates County, and I do appreciate the staff that we have. Not just the DSS staff, but all the other agencies that are represented, um, the team and the resources that they, um, provide. On page six, next to the last paragraph, and this is under community factors that impact the well-being of families and children, the team advised me during our November twenty nineteen, um, meeting to please leave, um, the information that was documented in last year's report. And one need is to advocate for psychiatric residential treatment facilities in the region, services for sex offenders, outpatient and residential services for the mentally ill and for a regional alternative home continuing to, or continue to be needed. We laugh at, not because they do not exist, but on any given day or night, we could be certain families that are in need of these resources. And it is real that you can have or have the need for sex offender treatment for children. You can have child on child, just like you have adult on child. Unfortunately, if a child comes into our custody needing those services, or we are mandated to provide those services to a family, we would have to travel, or the families would have to travel, as far as Charlotte, Montgomery County, Lee, Rayford, all of those that are less or more than two and a half hours away. So we are asking the Board of Commissioners, anytime that you have, um, the opportunity to advocate for resources to be a little closer than Raleigh, please think about Gates County DSS and the families that we serve. On page seven, child statistics for Gates County. For state fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, seventy three child protective services reports were made to Gates County DSS and forty six learned in investigation. In twenty seventeen, eighteen, there were fifty eight reports made to Gates County DSS and thirty one learned a CPS investigation or assessment. So we can see that there has been an increase. Recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners, also on page seven, and the team asked that I leave this information. Actions that will address child protection in the county. Number one, continue to approve sufficient funding for the Department of Social Services to enable the provision of quality child protective services and supportive services for families, such as workforce family assistance, Medicaid, food and nutrition services. Two, fund a fully trained, dedicated law enforcement officer to assist DSS matters with expertise in child and elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Not asking that a deputy officer be assigned to sit at DSS, to be available to DSS twenty four seven, because we understand that may not be possible, but anytime that there is some training, or, and the funding is not there, if you would please consider, or, in budgets, if all possible, that funds are available for law enforcement to go or attend any training that we may, um, attend, because we do work together, and it's important that we understand each other's policies. Provide additional safe recreational opportunities for youth, to divert them from dangerous activities that they engage in for lack of other options. And I know this has been in the report, uh, for several years, and when we think about the summertime and swimming, usually in the summer, you could have a lot of drowning. So just going around swimming in ponds and choosing not, uh, having swimming lessons, which I understand that it has been a change, and I believe the second graders are now, um, taking swimmer lessons, but if we had, um, some community swimming area, it would be nice. Support the CCPT's exploration of funding options for community awareness and education, and provide local match if required. The recruitment and retention of a local mental health substance abuse provider within Gates County that would be able to provide services, and I understand from the system of care coordinator in the person of Hope Illy, that there was a mental health provider here, and I want to say it was northeastern counseling services, but it was being underutilized, and per Hope, um, it doesn't look like they're going to send anybody back because it was underutilized, but the team still asks me to keep that in our, um, report. And then to address identifying gaps in services for county residents as identified throughout the year. We never know when something is going to be presented to us, and we do not have a resource for it, so we may be back before you. Almost done. Page eight. Other information related to child protection specific to the county. The CCPT slash CFPT members who are also Gates County DSS staff, serve on the following: Gates County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, which is JCPC, and Trillium Health Resources System of Care and Community Collaborative. Melody Meeks, CCPT Consultant from the North Carolina Division of Social Services, Child Welfare Section, attended the Gates County CCPT CFPT meeting at Gates County DSS on February twenty first, twenty nineteen. Melody Meeks stated that she was impressed with the Gates County's CCPT CFPT's membership, active participation, and the team's initiatives. According to Melody Meeks, the Gates County CCPT CFPT is a small community doing tremendous work. Melody Meeks shared that she was a social worker in Chicago, Illinois, attended East Carolina University, margin grant, served through CCPT advisory boards, and is currently a CCPT consultant. She said that she works closely with Brenda Albert, who is the state CFPT Coordinator, Children and Youth Branch, Division of Public Health. The Week of the Young Child was held at the Gates County Community Center on April thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Gates County DSS Child Care Coordinator was on site to share information about program services provided by DSS. One of the programs included subsidized childcare, a valuable resource for parents, caretakers who need to work and cannot leave their children home alone. Gates County CCPT CFPT members attended the Child Welfare Court convening in Curran County on May thirteenth, twenty nineteen. The focus was on collaborating with the group of court in order to obtain JY's reports, which helps to track hearings for children in DSS custody. In May twenty nineteen, the Gates County CCPT Chairperson requested the Gates County Index editor to advertise an article about reporting suspected child abuse or neglect to Gates County Department of Social Services. The request was honored, and the article was featured in the May twenty third edition of the Gates County Index. Gates County CCPT CFPT members were among other Community Child Protection and Child Fatality Prevention Teams in the district, who attended the vaping and e-cigarettes forum on May thirty first at the Alamo Regional Health Services in Elsby City. The presenter was Teresa Beersley, Region nine Tobacco Prevention Manager for Alamo Regional Health Services. Teresa Beersley is the local expert on this emerging health crisis, as she provided information regarding health impacts of tobacco use, youth and electric cigarette use, new and emerging products, examples of each, health impacts of electronic cigarettes, uh, marketing and FDA regulations. The Gates County CCPT CFPT were represented during the vaping and e-cigarettes forum held on October ninth, twenty nineteen, at the Richards Mill Pond Visitor Center. The presenter again was Teresa Beersley. Those are some of the things that, um, we participated in, in twenty nineteen. Also, in conclusion, in dependencies, there is an article featuring Gates County CCPT CFPT members, along with the consultant Melody Meeks, and the topic is, April is Child Peace Prevention Month. Also in that article, you see Social Work Supervisor Dennis Parker standing by a tree on the DSS property near the blue and silver pinwheels. We also have an article in the May twenty third, twenty nineteen edition of the Gates County Index titled, Reports Suspected Child Abuse or Neglect to Gates County DSS. And finally, in the October seventeenth, twenty nineteen edition of the Gates County Index, we have E. Danger with Teresa Beersley presenting at the Gates, um, at the Richards Mill Pond Visitor Center, and the title was, Local Health Officers Contraining Over Growing Number of Teens Using Electronic Cigarettes. And that concludes my report for twenty twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, for bringing that forward to us. I, I have one comment on, on page eight, I believe it was, the medical examiner, I think the medical examiner's changed for Gates County since you had Cameron Butts, is that correct, Chief?
There's a couple of others that have been designated, but I see it was also, I think there's three that you can. Michelle Riggisle and that girl from Pastor thing, E. N.
So is Cameron no longer?
No, Cameron is, they're, they're all three designated, they, they.
So we have three medical examiner. All right, I'll, I'll, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Ms. Pitt.
Ms. Pittman.
Good evening, everybody. I have a pingedal sense of chaos around. Your evening reading. Enclosed, you should find, um, a brief report, some of the activities that are going on with the Complete Account Committee. Training has started, outreach to the community has begun, um, we have another training session scheduled for committee members, um, on fourteenth at six o'clock. Because of Ms. Saunders' hard work, recruitment for census physicians in the county is going very well. We have met all, uh, we've met our quota and, uh, but we're still having people apply, so if you're interested, please go ahead. And again, thanking Ms. Saunders for all her hard work on that. The next forum is going to be identifying transient populations in the county, and that's already started. Natalie was kind enough to respond to my request today to, uh, talk to someone about getting PSAs on the county's website to encourage participation in the census, I appreciate that, thank you Natalie. These are the basic, uh, training, the basic training information that is provided by the census, um, and of course, all the committee members will be getting all of that. I'm working on a sheet, um, to post in businesses, you'll see on top the other, and it's not complete, it's gotta be proofread, and, um, I want to include the county logo and census logo at the bottom, and I'm gonna ask businesses in the county to post this as the date approaches for, uh, postcards to start going out. In terms of dates, on the left side of your folder, you will find twenty twenty census key dates. There's a little information there about jobs, since we're still taking, applications are still being taken, um, how the census invites people to respond, and because Mr. Owens requested it, I've included, um, a copy of the first three pages of the questionnaire, basically covers the first two people in the household, everything else is the same, but that information is in your folder. Um, there's information here on the census and confidentiality. Please remember that the census is worth a lot of money. In the state of North Carolina, over the course of a decade, every person we miss can cost us twenty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money for a county like this, so it's really important. What I'd like to ask tonight is that, uh, if it's possible, I know there's no budget approved, but if we could, from March and April, put something in the water bill, these people look at their water bills, um, asking them to respond to the census, I can put something together, not talk about anything that's more than a line or two, I don't think that the water company is gonna charge us that much to do it. If we can do that, I think that would be a, a big step and a big help, um, showing that the county is really interested in making sure that this happens. So I'm gonna ask you to please consider that. The census overall is worth six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars through a hundred and thirty-two programs, just for anybody who didn't hear it still earlier in the week. Again, it's worth a lot of money to us, we are a county with, uh, rural schools, so for us, it may be worth even a little more, we need to get every child accounted, and, um.
You could state that, that six hundred and seventy-five with a B.
Yes, that's with a B, that is billion, not million, okay? And, uh, also in your folder, you're talking fifty ways that the census state is used. I'm just gonna run over one or two things real quick for the, for, for everybody else. Decision-making at all levels of government comes from the census. It's taken for statistical purposes, your information is absolutely confidential, nobody is allowed to repeat it, nobody's allowed to give it out. Anybody who does so is risking a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine and five years in the Fed. So it's not, it's not something that, um, that people can get their hands up. You can be a terrorist, that information is immune under the Patriot, from the Patriot Act. There is no access by any government agency, it is a total lockbox. And it's been a fairly, a fairly, uh, successful one, sixteen thousand efforts today to break in, and they've never managed it, so, um, the information is good. Don't wait till someone comes to your door, please. When you get your postcard, respond right then, get it done, get it over with, and you don't have to worry about it, and you won't have to listen to me nagging you about it either. Thank you, everybody.
Mary, did you give us the date, I think it's in March that the card comes out?
Um, yes, the, um, it's, it's mid-March. Mid-March, the, the, and that, all the census key dates are right there on that first sheet on your left. Self-response begins on March twenty third, April first is, of course, Census Day. Um, if you have children staying with you, get them in, make sure it gets done, if there's, you know, an argument over who gets to report the kid, um, you know, where they're living, where the child is on April first, do it that way. It doesn't affect custody, it doesn't touch anything else, as I said, nobody has access to that information, so it doesn't matter, the important thing is to get the children counted, that's the big deal.
Mary, um, Ms. James Bondi, um, you still have a couple of spots available for the Complete Account Committee, am I reading that correct?
Uh, yep.
If, if the missions have any recommendations, do you have any?
I'm open to anybody you guys suggest.
Okay.
Uh, you know, there's, that, that's not a, that's not a closed and shut down thing, there's still people I'm trying to reach, so if anybody has a suggestion, or anybody wants to volunteer to come on and help, my number is three five seven zero seven eight three, call me, I'd be more than happy to have any help this offer.
And, and I want to apologize for everything you have done and will continue, whoever decided to come up and nominate you, being chair after the great, you gotta be a great person.
I don't know who that was.
Everybody got quite a lot, so.
Yeah, well, we'll see how it turns out in the end. I wanna point out that Gates County did very well in twenty ten. Self-response was, it was seventy-eight percent, that the government has set a floor of eighty-two percent this year, so we do have to up our game. Everything we can do to make it happen, we need to do. So people, please pass the word. The census is not meant to be intrusive, it's meant to help. Um, there's an awful lot that gets done based on the facts that they assemble with this group of census, so it is to everybody's benefit, uh, and it is mandated by the Constitution, so it is an important thing to be doing. There was something else. Now I can't, my mind just, it blinds me half. Thank you.
Ten questions. I looked at, I looked at it over the weekend, it's ten questions, is all it?
It's very easy, it's not complicated at all. Now, where I will tell you is that some people will get second survey. It's called the ACS, and it's a much more complicated survey. But most people will get the ten questions that we saw. So it's, 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 it's pretty basic, pretty simple. And, uh, I hope everybody's going to plan to set a good example on board, I'll send a narrative back right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, appreciate that. And from, uh, our online cell catchers, I believe we have, uh, Ms. Langston. Ms. Langston, how are you?
Good evening.
Did you give us your name and address?
My name is Sandy Langston, my husband is Miles Langston, we live on Carter's Road in Gatesville. I thank you commissioners for listening to my concern this afternoon, this evening. My concern is the solid waste fee that is added to the property tax. The note on the water bill states that a change in the solid waste fee was made in order to improve the efficiency and equity of solid waste building. And equity is fairness. Okay, the change is not equitable to my husband and me, as well as some other citizens in Gates County. My husband and I live in one resident, and we have another house down the road from us. Previously, we rented it out, but it hasn't been unoccupied for the last 10 years. The water was disconnected 10 years ago. But we kept the electricity on for security purposes, which we figured maybe deter potential vandalism. We paid our water bill monthly along with the solid waste up until July, when the solid waste fee was taken off the water bill and residents, it was put on the property tax bill. We didn't have a water bill at the old house because no one lived there for over 10 years. No water was there, no solid waste was taken to, from that property to the solid waste field. With the change, we were assessed a solid waste fee in the house that has been unoccupied for 10 years. I was told that it came away because the ordinance, because of the ordinance. The solid waste ordinance states the fee for solid waste shall apply to all inhabited dwellings affected with the connection of any other utility. In order for uninhabited dwellings to be exempt from the solid waste fee, the customer must provide proof that electric service has been disconnected. We respect the ordinance, and we feel that it shouldn't be a blanket policy for everyone in the county. Different people have different situations that should be addressed, you know, accordingly. There should be a waiver for situations where people own property and can provide proof that it is unoccupied, even though they have electricity there. It isn't equitable for my husband and me to pay two solid waste fees for a property that nobody lives there and hasn't been there for 10 years. We feel that the policy needs to be reviewed to make it more equitable for all the citizens in Gates County. Thank you.
Bring that to our division. And, uh, now we'll go to administrative reports, County Manager.
This is from November 21st through December 17th, 2019. Work continues on the bathrooms and the light fixtures of the historic courthouse, and work on wiring for the internet will begin in January. Chair Freeman, Dr. Williams, Chair Ray Belton, and I may have been given the chance to walk through the dental office. The school system expressed interest in the building pending the status of the septic system. They would like to look at the building again at a later date to help determine a cost for renovation versus the cost of building. Community center was also discussed at that meeting, and this will be discussed under our business of the agenda. The North Carolina Housing Finance Association monitored case files from visited houses that were repaired with essential single-family rehabilitation law on Pole 16 on December 11. To date, no additional notes or questions have been received from Housing Finance Association. Commissioner Hopple and I are representing Gates County in the Gatesville Christmas Parade on December 14th. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Chair, if, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Um, it's been about, I guess, a couple of months now, County Manager, when, I don't remember the exact date, when we questioned, um, specifics on requirements for gems?
That was sent to, well, some of that information was sent to me, and it was just requested in November, the last November meeting, and some of the information that was sent was not what we were looking for, it gave the data. And so I have asked for them, such as, excuse me, data for the number of citizens served within the county. It did not include the specifics, such as the square footage, or how they're required by law to keep food from this funding source separate from this, and how they account for some space that's needed for that. So I requested that specific information and waited for that information. But I can forward you the data that Vanessa Trinkin sent about number of citizens served within the county.
And to Commissioner Jones, we, uh, we have reached out to Alamo Health Services as pertaining to the, uh, the septic system there, and, uh, I spoke with Ron Duble about that, he's not going to be available until February due to other things he's doing, so we should give him back there. Any other questions about that facility? Nothing. Commissioner Hopple and others have toured that, Commissioner Owens, have all been through that. Facility is, uh, looks available, and, uh, from what we heard from schools, they did like it, they're just, they'll talk about it, and you may have tended to read it.
Uh, no, but I do know that, uh, in speaking to somebody with the, uh, with the board, the next factor that will have any impact on it is that February from, uh, Duble. Mr. Duble's office in the city, right?
Yes, and well, he's, he also has an office out of the medical center there too.
It's actually on the right side.
But he has, uh, he has all the, the businesses as well as the restaurants and the, uh, the factor until February.
I think everything hinges on that, in that respect.
Is there a motion accepted, County Manager, before this?
I think there's a motion to accept it.
Form a motion, we don't have to, you don't have to accept it, it's just a report.
All right, what's that report?
And it's on your table, and it's been belted in on the noise, it's, uh, in Kristin electronically.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've had a very busy few weeks in the Tax Department, and it kept us all on our feet the last few weeks, as you all know, today was the last day to pay 2019 taxes without the current penalty tomorrow. Uh, the report that you all have is the tax collector report from December 1st to the 31st. As you can see, for the month of December, we collected right at $2.26 million for the month of December, and that, um, since January the 2nd, which is only in three business days, we're collecting an additional $1.2 million. So thanks for moving on, uh, in the Tax Department. Uh, we did have three properties up for foreclosure this month, uh, we sold two of those at option at the, um, courthouse steps. You all have a copy of the refund request for the month of December. I believe all of those refund requests are from, overpayments from, uh, mortgage test register, where the taxpayer either paid it first and the mortgage company paid it afterwards, or vice versa. So those are, those are all refunds that we're, uh, requesting for the month of December. Other than that, do you have a question for me?
I see where in Zakiya's Legal Services we collected $10,000 from past due tax.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
For the month of December.
Yes, ma'am. And then, once those foreclosures that were sold get recorded, you know, Zakiya's will pay us what we, our, our due on that, so that goes, that goes straight to them and to us.
Those foreclosures, I was not there, were they purchasers, were they the finance companies?
No, sir, they're in the, yes, sir.
We can, are we able to approve all the refunds in one? Ms. Chair, Mr. Chair? Ms. Chair, I make a motion that we refund all four property owners, Adams, Kirkland, Boy, and Austin, as presented by Mr. Hill tonight.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Close, by the motion, here we go. All in favor?
Thank you.
The managers here.
One of them got it at Gatesville on the beach, didn't he?
Yes.
She doesn't have to give a synopsis of anything.
No, she doesn't have to give a synopsis of that.
Kim, let's slide it back, Kim. All sixty pages. Um, one thing, Ms. Chair, I may, do we have any other date, my County Manager, on building grounds?
Regarding which topic?
The septic issue.
The one for this building and our administrative offices, the repair has been made, is working at this time. They do not know how long that repair will last due to the age and condition of the septic tank, so that will be something that will need to be discussed, and that is something, since you brought that up, that I forgot to mention during my report, that needs to be discussed during our budget time, and I would like to have a meeting with all department heads and our IT department, as well, all, as well as commissioners, if possible, one day before the budget season starts, I'm looking at February the 20th perhaps, to give everyone time to get together and look at each department's actual needs versus their wants, and what the budget can actually sustain for the coming year.
All in favor?
Yes.
So number four says it's currently working but still not functioning properly?
That was written at the beginning of the month, but since then, it's, it's working. But the person who did that said it could last another year, if it lasts five years, it might stop at any time.
Have they, have they checked on price support, Jones?
No.
For the long-term solution?
No.
Any other on that, sir?
He is, he's been consulting, and he's, I thought he was the one who made the recommendation that it's the fix for the moment.
Ms. Chair, yes, sir. County Manager, since you're looking at a date in February 20th, I was wondering if we can address as far as approving that date with our calendar?
Goes beyond the calendar to provide it.
What day of the week is it?
It's a Thursday.
What?
It's a Thursday.
Is it the third Thursday?
Yes, I believe so. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I have more information if you can, I don't know.
I'm not saying that, yeah. Have more information?
Then we would be looking at during the day.
Oh, I, I'm fine during the day.
I'm, I'm out that day, Ms. Chair.
Well, we have a date in front of us, uh, let's, uh, let's study our calendars and come and discuss it, and bring it to the County Manager if necessary.
Do you have an email?
We could buy an email and, um, email's fine, we may keep changing that until we close the day.
And we're looking at the month of February. By noon.
Somewhere around the way.
Well, that was just my recommendation based on some other things that I think were coming up as well.
From, uh, Finance, uh, do we want to discuss anything as pertaining to the article?
We received, uh, the draft, it was right, right after our, like, Christmas, um, parade happened, looking at that. I have sent the first round of questions, I would have copied, um, you wanted to ask them, um, to James, and we're supposed to, you know, come home tomorrow and come and see to address some of his questions about the numbers in the draft.
So when do we think that, that might have a workable poll?
Well, like I said, it's completed, other than, I have some questions about numbers that were provided, um, I would say soon, Tana can talk, and then he can tell me how they came up with that number, um, it's just us.
So we'll look at maybe a program?
No, I don't think, no later than the end of this, this month.
Great.
So are you, are you, you're saying that it's complete, I mean, it's been filed?
No.
No, it's, it's, it's in the, the draft form, like, um, I think you all have had a copy of the, 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 from last, from the eighteen on it. Um, it's in that same format, and I'm just going through it, making sure the numbers match what we have on, on file.
We appreciate that, yeah, that we do, and, and for the sake of fellow commissioners and, as well as our citizens that attend to them that are listening as well, is, uh, our Finance Officer, Ms. Ilo, has, has lots of questions to back to, in regards to, uh, they need to answer those.
Thank you, Kim, for providing the information. I haven't sent it out to the other commissioners, um, I requested some information in regards to sales tax collection, uh, for citizens, and I got a very thorough email, um, and it, it addressed exactly what I needed, and, and I'll forward it out to the rest of the commissioners when I remember to do so.
Thank you, ma'am. Any items in articles of interest? If you're not, ma'am, maybe it's time for me to bring it up, but I do have an aunt that's very dear to me, that calls Freeman Island, that I refer to as Sissy, lovingly. She's going to have her 101st birthday this coming week, so, uh, we all want to wish her a happy 101st one, so, Thursday. If anybody wants to go by her house, uh, she's welcome, she's welcome, everybody, stop by, wish her a happy birthday, so, glad to have her. Any other articles of interest within the county? One other thing I'd like to bring up, uh, in the, uh, passion of Commissioner Jordan, uh, really weighed heavy on, on us as, uh, as colleagues, and we lowered the flags to half-mast. It caused me to look around Gates County, and I'm looking for Gates County flags, looking for North Carolina flags. I don't know how we've misplaced those around Gates County, but, um, kind of hard to find, we've got quite a few buildings, but I'm not seeing a North Carolina flag nor a Gates County flag, and, and all of those buildings.
And so much for county buildings?
County buildings. Schools, county buildings, so, uh, I'd like us to address that and look at flying our flags early prior to Gates County flag along with North Carolina, and, and there we catch the United States flag, so, uh, we lowered something half-mast, uh, we'll see every flag flying, and, uh, we have to do that, uh, unfortunately, in your passing, with all the circumstances, we have to manage, so, it's something for us to, to look at, and I, I looked at that, but Commissioner George passed it, and was surprised not to find the flags. Kind of calendar, anything of interest other than now we're looking at the twenty February and somewhere around that date. Item number six, public hearing, text amendment request for outdoor shooting range.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here tonight. Um, the first item of business would be the reason and this is what I found on the agenda, is that okay?
Six, six.
Gotcha. Well, we have had a request submitted and an application. All right. The request is to amend the table of permitted uses to include the District O and I, which is office and institutional for shooting ranges and to include law enforcement. The planning board unanimously approved this on eleven nineteen, two thousand and nineteen and recommends approval, um, to the Board of Commissioners. Currently, the table of permitted uses, outdoor shooting ranges, allow shooting range by special use permit in the A-one district only. The additional restrictions imposed on certain special uses, one-five-five dot zero-nine-two, our shooting range is currently does not include the law enforcement. And I've included for you all to see, the table of permitted uses, one-five-five dot zero-seven-five, uh, we have A-one as what is currently there and highlighted is what they requested. And then also in our ordinance, additional restrictions imposed on certain uses, we have proposed in the highlighted areas for the law enforcement outdoor shooting range to be included and to also amend to include the new highlighted areas that have been since... If you'd like me to read them, I will, or I can highlight minimum area and things like that. If, that's the changes. Oh, yes, we have one correction, um, which is number four for the law enforcement shooting range. It has standard, it said number six below, it's actually number five in the parentheses there, number four for the operation. Let's see, we had number four there. And that's the only change to that. But then what has been requested, and we have the application submitted, um, from our Sheriff's Department here, Sheriff Campbell. We have that for your review. Are there any questions?
The current stuff is flying short. You cannot be here with schools or residential areas and for public safety.
We do have those setbacks, yes, ma'am, which we did.
And the earths that have to be so tall and everything.
Yes. Yes, we included that, all of that is the new proposal.
Who, uh, who will be providing, uh, management might be questioning to you. Although, uh, the, the very last line, uh, number six down there talks about liability limits.
It will be, this shooting range will be covered by the county. We've already discussed it and talked to the insurance company and I know Sheriff Campbell was in there, I think. You were there with Christie, Tom, but these are the numbers that came from our insurance company.
Just we like an amendment added to our policy much like?
Right.
Okay. All right. The, the, um, Mr. Chair, do you have to come back up after the public hearing if there are any questions? Uh, you okay?
Yes.
Better rise.
We want to, uh, to now go to the public hearing. Yes.
I'll make a motion in the middle of the hearing.
Second. All in favor, moving to public hearing?
Aye.
In the post, like sign. Here we go. All right, we'll go to the public hearing.
There is no one currently signed up to speak.
There is one page. What do you, what area are you talking about?
Well, this is actually, this... Sorry.
This is actually to amend our current zoning ordinance. It's not referencing exactly a location. They may have some idea and I would be more than happy to let Sheriff Campbell, um, answer any questions you may, if you'd like.
No, I just, I just wanted to get talked about it.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, this is, this is amending the, uh, z- current zoning ordinance and what is allowed and is not allowed in what districts is what they're asking to be amended. But there, and we have that in there, just explain it a little bit. It, it's approved as it is, it would not still have to be approved by a special use permit by the Board of Adjustments as well. So there would be a public, you know, time for people to ask questions and all in certain places or locations they would be located.
Is it a public or private, a public-private together?
It's like you said, this is just for a re- this just text amendment. It's not references the actual, on actual shooting range.
I got one question, man. Yes, if, if you would, I'd love to provide a few estates or any, uh, and call up to your podium. Oh, my name's Ada Riker. Oh. I didn't come here to really make a speech, just to listen tonight, but, um, it said the county would cover the insurance. Is...
Liability insurance.
Liability insurance.
If it's going with the law enforcement.
If it's just the law enforcement, if that's correct, yes. And also we may want to add, it is county property.
If the law enforcement has, well, yes, that would be a...
I thought they simply didn't know where it was.
That was my question, well, just the law enforcement, it can't be paid for.
But the text amendment is for if some private individual wants to set up a shooting range, the same requirements would be the set offs and the burrows and all that.
Yes.
So a private individual could have a private shooting range, I mean, a public, I mean, discharge, they would have to follow the same rules.
Actually, we have a...
But like, now the insurance department wants a shooting range.
We've actually made them a little more strict even for private. It was, you can see what we actually, you know, had understruck to remove, so we've actually made them a little more stringent at that aspect as well because just a little thing, just tweaking some of the rules to make it safe.
And we're still in the public hearing, this, I think Ms. L. B. needs to give her a vote, Alyssa.
The rest of the town?
Say again? I see a hand.
I've got a question, um, you didn't read the whole thing earlier. You said that you made it more...
You come up to the podium.
Sorry. John Tebba, Captain Corpie, you, you had said you had made it more stringent. Could you briefly tell us, um, what part of it was more stringent?
Um, actually, um, our distances, our firms, um, and at least, you know, an individual who would have to be there is almost to the extent which was in our current ordinance. And then what we've added now is a minimum area, uh, for the outdoor shooting ranges, they shall be located, located on a side or parcel with an area of at least ten acres. We didn't have that before. It could have been, you know, possibly something smaller, depending on what the Board of Adjustment and went through. Then we have a separation that no part of a shooting range shall be located within a hundred feet of any property line and less than one thousand feet from any residential dwelling or school is measured from the firing line in the direction of the line of fire. Now we add a configuration which is addressing the backstops, the side firms, um, eight feet for the side firms, twenty feet for the backstops, um, is what we're proposing or what is proposed by the plan for. Firing line covers of overhead safety mackles for rifle fire only. Then we've also added operations, like what they can shoot actually at this particular range, like you can't, you know, test out like, um, things like that. It's restricted to a pistol, rifle or shotgun only. No use of, of explosives or any target detonates. At least one qualified individual in a club or organization, that would be for the private. And then we've added the law enforcement firing range should be utilized by duly-sourced law enforcement personnel only, except for is provided in standard practical mode, which is the end of individuals of eighteen or under. Then our fencing, we actually added, um, that it has to be a six-foot fence provided around the entire perimeter of the shooting range and every hundred and fifty feet, you know, danger sign of the shooting range. So we actually went into a lot deeper, I think, just a little, little more safety conscious is what we've done. And it replaced, before there was only four lines, basically, if that gives any idea. Not that it wasn't good, but that was all we had, but now they've addressed it.
Is anyone else, any other comments? From the public? If so, come up.
Mr. Chair, make a motion. We go out of public hearing?
I'll say a motion.
All in favor, coming out of public hearing? In your post, like sign. As if.
I would like to ask, Mr. Chair, if I may, please, um, separation, let it be.
Was there any talk of the planning board? No part of the shooting range shall be located within one hundred feet of any property line?
Any discussion amongst the planning board that... I remember when I was on the planning board and sold farms and was, was being discussed and I knew we had a lot of conversation about how many feet. Was there any conversation?
They reviewed what we had submitted as the, a draft proposal and no one... And after hearing, they had a speaker that day from another county that actually is, I guess, experienced in designing shooting ranges and none of that was objected to, so. And what we had before was a hundred feet, you know, in previous ordinance. We didn't address the distance from school, um, but now they did, so, I mean, they felt comfortable with it, but of course, I want you to...
God, can I continue, Mr. Chair? Um, the Sheriff, Sheriff, can you come up to the mic? I know you've read this or been read into it. That's the only part that can, that concerned me was the separation part. No part of the shooting range located within a hundred feet of any property line? You deal with the good and a lot of the bad people and the, I don't think really big bad people without a shooting range, um, that they would let, you know, to be used for safety purposes, that hundred feet from any property line. You, you okay with that?
I would, I would increase that.
It's on a ten acre parcel, over the Daniels line.
Most likely it'd be somewhere near the center. Most likely. Most likely, yeah. But I just, that was my only question, Lisa, um, and if the Sheriff's okay with it? He's likely to be the one having the... Well, the thing, you know, I make the comment that most likely it'd be in the middle of the property or somewhere near the center of the property, but this, this is a government document when the person makes application. When they make application, uh, they'll have to do, they have to meet these requirements and say that it's in the center of the property. I think that would be hard to, to dictate in some way. Only other way to do that would be, um, to increase it to a greater amount, which would push it far away from the property line. And that's not the part where you should get into. I'm just, it just refers to any part of the actual shooting range. But safety, I, you know, that was another thing that, that bothered me, Sheriff, was, was that I said?
This range is for law enforcement only. It is a range for the Gage County Sheriff's Office to go and qualify every year. We will be out there with certified range instructor and we will be the only ones using that range if that works for them.
Not, not what's, no, Sheriff, that's not what's presented to us tonight. This is, this is a public.
It is not a public.
This, for the text, for the text amendment, it includes both, but also don't forget they both, no matter who applies on the shooting range, they have to have a special use permit. So don't they have to submit a site plan?
Yes, they would have to submit all the information necessary or accommodate that. This is, and, and, and I know you see the hundred foot from the parcel line. We're, also that's measured in the line of fire, in the direction of fire. Just explain that a little bit, too. Because I, I was looking, I'm not an expert on shooting ranges, so I've had to learn a whole lot about it and this seemed to be something consistent among counties and other, you know, law enforcement ranges. What we've done here is try to bring the law enforcement range in with our, we also have private ranges we have to consider too, or in our ordinance, so we're just trying to make something a little inconsistent with other counties, but take care of our county state.
Well, I'm glad they came up with ten acres.
Impressive. Anybody want to dwell on fencing a little bit? If you would claim that, we, uh...
Yes, yeah, that is, that is something else we saw consistent and is required by our insurance as well. That was one comment that was, that would make or break it, that it had to be fenced.
And it wouldn't fence the entire property, certainly.
No, the, the shooting range, the limits of the shooting range itself would say that was the ten acres. You have to surround that shooting range in order for that to be covered.
Six foot.
Yes.
It's enough cause to deter. A lot of people said it's good, too. I have no more questions.
Any other questions? Mr. Jones?
Just, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, um, what we're looking at tonight is a text amendment for any shooting range to be located in the county, not just, um, one in particular. So basically, if David Lassiter wants to put up a shooting range or our law enforcement wants to put up a shooting range, we're looking at a text amendment in change of amendment of what the requirements are, um, when someone was to apply. If you were to apply and want one, this text amendment is going to require you to get a special use permit going through the Board of Adjustments, so they would have the ultimate final say so. Is that, am I wording that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we pass text amendment two zero one nine one one dash TA as zero one shooting range as presented to us tonight.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor? Signs of aye?
Aye.
In your post, like sign. Here we go. Text amendment.
Chair, do you want to have the clerk, the table, the man, so, anybody?
All right, our next order of business here is a map amendment request. The request is to amend zoning on a close to minus seven acre parcel identified as thirteen fifty-four, North Carolina thirty-two South, Hobbsville, North Carolina two seven nine four six, parcel number zero seven zero zero two four three, being south of intersection of North Carolina thirty-seven and North Carolina thirty-two, north of Punch Bowl Road, west of Burke Road, east and adjacent to Highway thirty-two South and Mentonsville Township. Property is currently zoned A-one, which is agricultural, and the request is to resent the parcel to commercial C-one. the parcel to commercial C-one for the purpose of operating a retail store. The advocate is Galandon Forest Equity, and I think they have someone here tonight, too, if there's any questions. And on November sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, the Gates County Planning Board recommended that this MAP amendment rezoning be approved by the Board of County Commissioners in a six-to-one vote. And also, we have to consider during this a consistency statement on what they have sent. And the planning board adopted the following consistency statement and has recommended approval by the Board of County Commissioners. The statement is as follows. The proposed MAP amendment rezoning, as requested, would be a commercial use, and at this time appears that a retail store would be built. This request is consistent with our current two thousand seventeen Gates County Camma Land Use Plan, and as indicated in the land use plan, the parcel would be located in a community service area, as shown on MAP twenty of the Gates County Future Land Use Map, page five nine six.
Mr. Chair, would like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we enter a public hearing?
Second motion.
All in favor entering public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Hear none. Let's go to the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, there is a list of people who would like to speak, if you'd like me to call them up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first would be Marina Jones. And there's still a five-minute public comment, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Veronica Jones. I live on Santa Claus Road. Um, however, my mother and father left me a small piece of land that is concerned with this that we are addressing right now. When I went to receive the letter and went to the planning committee, it wasn't that I objected to it being rezoned from agriculture to commercial. The problem that I see, we, that is such a busy road. You have the junction of NC thirty-two and thirty-seven, you have one of the recycling centers, you have a curve, you have a convenience store, and it is on a hill, and it is just a major, major problem. This is a concern of the people in our neighborhood. We, um, I foresee, as I think about this, uh, the day when we left the planning committee, most people had this very, came up and spoke, felt like I did. This is a disaster waiting to happen. And looking at what happened on Pennsylvania, Turnpike yesterday, just kind of goes through my mind, because this is a, a bad situation. We have a terrible time trying to access that piece of property. When we go to take the tractor over there, we go Burke Road so that we don't go on Highway thirty-two. We come at the end of Burke Road, and we come up that hill, we come up that curve. It, we really need two people, one driving the tractor to make that turn, and one is a spotter to be sure that you're not going to be run over by an eighteen-wheeler barreling down that road. Now, this, the people who were with us that day at the planning committee voiced the same concerns that we have. I have, I think that the store, the reaction I get from the people in the, in the community is, oh yes, that's going to be great, but those who stopped and thought about the danger and the congestion that's going to be there and the possibility, I think we're looking at a disaster. We're, this, we're just waiting for something to happen if we proceed with this. I think that we should rethink this. And I also, as I think about it, I also think Doc's going to come up with, oh, well, we need to redo this, we need to redesign it. Well, let's just go right over there, and let's take this property and do what we want to do. I foresee them, I'm afraid, coming over and taking everyone on my side of the property there, because we have people living on the other side. That's my concern about the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jimmy Wiggins.
My name is Jimmy Wiggins. I live in Hallsfield. Don't live far from the road, you know, laying it together, no. My concern with it is the same as hers. You come up the hill, and you have to go around that curve, and it's just, it, it just looks like an accident waiting to happen the whole time. I have not heard one soul say that they didn't want to store it there some way. Well, I haven't heard anybody say that. They all say the same thing. Can't believe they're going to put it down. And it, it just doesn't, it just doesn't feel, that's what, that's what the majority of the people in my mind into the county plan. Now, I haven't heard anybody say that they didn't want to store a period, no, nobody. I think it'd be a good idea, like, but that is our concern, it's not just mine, it's other people's, too. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Brent. I'm sorry to say your name is Brent Hardum.
Hey, I'm Brent Hardum. I'm with Triangle Site Design, and I'm here with, uh, that with, uh, Glanville, uh, Equity Board. During the planning board meeting, we, we heard the comments, you know, especially the comments about transportation, the engines and everything. We also had some stormwater comments, and I wish I helped remember names. But the comments, you know, after the meeting, I would ask if I would approach NC DOT one of the concerns. And so I did this. The, the next day I got back to the office, we reached out to DOT and talked to them about the concerns of the community, and I actually have an email that I'd like you to have. It's from, um, Jason Davidson, who was with NC DOT, uh, I believe he's a tractor engineer. He's came to the site and looked through the site, and based on the recommendation from the community to reduce the speed from fifty-five to forty-five miles per hour. And so that was how we got through this, was to, you know, talk to the community about everything. Uh, the second thing is, we have a NC DOT driveway permit. I just got it today for the email. So we do have approval for the plan, you know, for what we're providing in this area, in this, on this piece of property. So we have a driveway permit, and we have the recommendation from the community to reduce the speed limit. We also have the stormwater permits from the state, um, which I haven't, because I knew, and we also have the erosion control permits from the state. So based on the design, you know, we're not talking about the design efficient, this uh, rezoning, uh, we meet all the state requirements for, uh, for board proposal. Now, we got any, if you got any questions on the problems that you're laying down, so...
One question I got. Did DOT share with you their seven-year plan?
No, sir. They provided what we're giving here.
Do you think I've commented on it? Don't we have...
We still have one more person for public hearing, for public hearing. I'll hold my file.
Thanks, sir.
David Lassiter.
My name is David Lassiter. Good evening, Chair, Chris. My concern is the same as the others, and from a firefighter standpoint, and, and the accidents that's going to be there, we've already had a few from coming out of the recycling center, and I believe, my opinion, that's going to be even worse, because it's going to be coming from both ways. That's all I have, sir.
That's all that's signed up, that's all.
And now we open the floor for anyone else, any comments? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Milton Carter, I live in Hobbsville. And I was looking at that site, and, um, it, it's really got a safe site. If you're coming from my place, south on thirty-two, you come down into that bottom, and around the corner, you can't see anybody. There's going to be some major fatalities there. Uh, you know, I could see that, and not to mention the backs up on the swamp there, I don't know if anybody's looked at too well, you know, the, uh, what it would be, uh, wet lanes, aspects of that. But we wouldn't like to have a store there, I mean, that'd be great, just like the gentleman said, but I think that's a really, really bad spot, and somebody's going to die at that corner. But you can buy it at my place. It's much safer, it's on the corner, but that's not where I would be, thank you.
Any other comments?
My name is Rob Taylor, the county manager. My name is Lawrence Jordan, I'm in that, uh, community also, and I disagree with everyone else. It's just a bad situation on the safety there, and, and that's good that my man reached out to the DOT for the change of leak, the, the speed limit, that's good. But at forty-five mile an hour, how many people do you think are going to break their speed, you know, in the old highway to forty-five mile an hour? And like everybody said, it's just a disaster waiting to happen. And, uh, on the other side of that, about the erosion program, what you said also, because we, none of us can foresee what's going to happen when God steps up. And hopefully we don't have a one soon in this ring, but for the pit that my young man had said that they're going to put in place, uh, to hold back the water, and then it's going to have a, a drain for when the overflow, that it would flow. And now my concern is, uh, I go to the church there, which is directly in front of, uh, US thirty-seventh, at which is Blanchard Grove, which is Baptist Church. We have a, a grave site there, and now that due to, I forget what, uh, stone it was, that, that, that y'all had to do the flood, change the flood, because now we can't put any more graves on that site due to the flood. But like I said, due to something unseen happening that we don't have in control of, uh, through that, is it possible that you think that those graves might be pushed up out of the ground? And then that's going to put a, a tremendous expense on the church to, to do whatever it takes to do to put them back in the ground, or whatever. Uh, you know, it's just, because that's a swamp area, and, uh, through the sediment of the earth, and, because that's going to be, it's going to be a terrible landfill, because that's a good twenty-hour, thirty, and I'm just sitting on my house on top of here, because I don't know, but it's going to be a technically a terrible landfill, because I have walked that swamp and hunted for squirrels, and it's going to be a terrible landfill that's want to settle, or the erosion come from the, uh, from the rain or whatever. It's just going to make everything unsafe through, through the traffic, traffic, and then maybe, hopefully, that the storm can, you know, why? Hopefully, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you give us our addresses?
Oh, my address is two zero nine five, Highway thirty-seven, south.
Thanks, sir.
And, and excuse me, and, and I, I told my man, he got it in his place, by his place.
Thank you. Thank you. Any one else? There's not a set place. Mr. Chair, please.
Make a motion to come on to closed session.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Hear none, we're out of closed session. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to speak. I'm the Hobbsville Commission, and I live on thirty-two, and I know the tremendous traffic on thirty-two, with the trucks coming from Ethan with produce and grains, the log trucks, and they cannot stop on the down. And if, we've had numerous accidents at Convenience Site, where people are trying to pull it up high, and it's hard to see, especially if you have to cross the lane and going up towards Chilarn County. And we've had numerous accidents there. And I just see this, it is, I mean, I would love to have a store, more retail, uh, one hundred percent more retail in the county. However, I just think this is the wrong location. You've got thirty-seven coming in with a lot of traffic, you have Duck Through, you have Grant's Garage, you have Convenience Site, you have Blanchard Grove Church, all that. And you're coming up a hill from Chilarn County line, then you have a curve. When you're making turns to the left and the right, it's going to get off. And like I said, we have a lot of truck traffic. And when they're cruising down that road, and somebody's pulling out a slow one, a car versus a eighteen-wheeler, two things will win. It is, and, um, plus the last system, like Hobbsville Fire Department, you'd be interested to know the amount of cars are coming out of there for vendor vendors at Convenience Site. Mrs. Grant, I mean, Mrs. Wiggins knows that, she has the business right there, a lot of vendor vendors dying, and that's just going to add to the problem. Yes, I want to store, I just think it's a horrible location.
Just a clarification first, before my comments. I look at the vote on the last page, shouldn't be five and one.
Eight, six, seven. How do you count the numbers?
Two or five.
It was five and one.
Good comments, um, from everybody. I would like to ask the gentleman here, now, if you want to come back to the question. If you, please, sir, if you'd come back to the question. You say you got your permit today for the driveway by?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you got it with you, or?
I got it through email today on the way here, so I can email it to Mr. Chair.
Is it a, is it one driveway?
Yes, sir.
What's the...
It's thirty-six feet wide.
Thirty-six.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, it was like a bad location, safety wise, to me. Typically, historically, the committee that submits this document, very seldom we disagree with. And, you know, we can come from the same fabric, the same community, and various, we might disagree on one little issue or something like that. But just for me and, and the rest of my colleagues here, I looked over the names. Um, I'm, I'm going to have to, before I... I'm gonna have to, before I vote, I'm gonna have to talk to some of these people just to see what I missed that they felt like, you know, bringing forward what the recommendation was. So I don't know if anybody else feels that way. But I'm not prepared to vote on it tonight. As to the speed limit, a lot of trucks go down that road. I'm afraid they're not gonna honor forty-five mile an hour speed limit just for that one little section of road there. Unless they're turning left, coming from Eaton, unless they're turning left, they're going way, they're not gonna honor that speed limit.
Can I say something about that?
Sure, you can.
So when we go after problems, you know, we go through NC, uh, NC DFT. So for us, I think, they're the ones that do the research on the road. They have the crash records, they have all the documentation needed to make the permit valid. And so that's what we go off of. The forty-five mile production was not them taking that and just saying, we're gonna do it that way. That was from the community that I just volunteered to provide to DNT. So that's where that came from. But as for the speed limit, they, if they post a speed limit, I mean, that is their idea of this is a safe location. This is a safe driveway based on this speed limit. I think that's out of speed, that's anyway, you know, it could be. The I believe in the Bible, so that's everywhere.
Sort of, you know, the DOT to agree real quickly to change the speed limit. Because a situation like this sort of lends to their example that they think is gonna be dangerous too.
What he states in that email, that after we deal with, that they feel like this comes to this point where it would be good to go ahead and reduce the speed limit. But that's also why, with that statement, the safety of reducing to forty-five, is why they're saying that this location, this driveway, is safe for this particular project and for this rezoning.
We, you know, I've heard these comments, and I think I heard them from Ms. Hopler too. We are grateful, we thank her that this project wants to come to Gates County. We look at the whole, the whole picture. And I really wanted to hear about the driveway bike, so thank you, sir. Thank you.
When you said about egress and regress, it's gonna be thirty-six feet, and it's just one driveway. Did DOT say anything about a turn lane?
They are not requiring a turn lane. They feel that it's safe right now.
And I, I too had gotten several, and all unfavorable comments on background that I did, not only from law enforcement aspect, but also the citizens there too. And they all said, do want to store, just don't want in that location, because it's a very dangerous location for the citizens who live there, who was, who was passing through.
Mr. Jones, Lisa can come back up, thank you, Brent. Commissioner Owens made a statement. And I'll try to push you bravely, Jack, but I won't. He made a statement that historically, or theoretically, or all in the past, when the board presents it to commissioners for approval, typically, it passes, usually without too many questions asked. And we've all heard the citizens from Hoppsville, the property right there, the fire chief, or assistant fire, volunteer fire chief, and Mr. Jordan right around the corner. My question to you, Lisa, is sitting on this side of the table now, and this is my first experience on this side of the table, instead of the planning board. The planning board presents it, their decision based off of no personal prejudice.
Exactly.
They're passing, to answer Commissioner Owens' question, their, if five hundred citizens show up, if Glenwood Forest Equity has their stuff in the water that's acquired, it doesn't matter if they personally think it's a bad spot.
Exactly.
So then it comes to us for final approval.
Yes, if Glen and Equity, and they did, they contacted NC Doc, let's say, in this instance. These things are based on studies, correct me if I'm wrong, but studies, also NC Doc has to base it on all their engineering calculations, and numbers, and traffic counts, things like that. So if all those things are submitted, just as Brent did, that's what the planning board bases it on. You know, not, not taking a stand for or against, based on the information they, they received. That's exactly what I'm saying.
So to put you on the spot, we've heard from Ms. Jones, Mr. Wiggins, Mr. Lassiter, Mr. Carter, and Mr. Jordan tonight. Five citizens that are against it, that all have a vested interest right there in the neighborhood. Again, I've been doing this for a year now, and this is my first experience with this. The planning board has said by five to one vote, that they're recommending it be done. Are you saying that we have to put our personal opinions to the side? And, you know, I hear, I hear Ms. Hopler, who, you know, Hoppsville is her district, five of her citizens say they're not for it. And she even expressed concern about the safety place. So being on this side of the table, how do we say no, is my question? When the documents provided by the planning board and the county planner are together? That's my question for my fellow commissioners.
Well, I'm kind of on it. It depends, it depends where you apply the weight on the facts, you know, about the driveway, the width of it, the speed limit being altered. To me, you put weight on those facts. And when I think about one of, one of the citizens coming out of there, one of our local citizens, coming out of that driveway, and of the business, or going into the business, to get rear-ended because somebody comes around there with a truck, and although you can't stop, put a lot of value on that. And we can use, without bias, we can use common sense as to what I think. And I put a lot of weight on that. I mean, when, if you ask me, is this the best place, safety wise, if you just say safety? And you ask me, is this the best place to do this in a safe way? I would almost bet you that price of property played a huge part, not only what price is paid for property. But I would almost bet that price of property played into the location. Because if I were building a business of this nature, I would do it there. So I put a lot, I put a lot of weight on the common sense, and it allows me to be unbiased.
Well, if I could speak, I think the people who live there understand the situation. We go to the Convenience Site, we go to Duck Through, we go to Blanchard Grove Church, we go to Grant's Garage, and we know when friends and neighbors have had vendor vendors there. And it is dangerous. It is very dangerous with your turn in certain ways. And I think we know that. And it's just not these five people who's have been contacted, people. I've heard it in the church, at Convenience Site, and at various places. People are concerned. A lot of people, they, when they go into those convenience sites, or pulling off from church, they're going very, very slow. Eighteen wheeler comes barreling down on you, it's not gonna be a pleasant sight. So, you know, I was on the planning board, there are rules and regulations we have to follow. But you also have the element of common sense that I rely on.
I would like to add one comment, and I'm glad Commissioner Jones brought it up. When you was talking about the recommendation, you're correct. They do have to make their decision based on the facts. Yeah, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
And the other, the other factor that assists with us is that we've all served on the planning boards upstairs. And we've all had that information in front of us. And we've had to make those decisions. And we've had to vote, and we've had to vote as pertaining to what is the best for Gates County, and what's the best for the Gates County folks. That's who we wanna look after, and that's what we take into consideration in this case.
Any other comments?
Would we like to see the information that he got today? Mr. Chair, table this out, they're wearing meeting. Not, I don't, I don't just cannot believe them or anything, but is it something that could be tabled to our February meeting?
Uh, Mr. Jones, I would, I would think so. I mean, I would assume that that information came from Corvengier or other body.
It's the driveway permit.
Driveway permit.
It's them giving us permission to put in that driveway.
Would that be?
Well, I think the speed limit reduction and the information such as that, is what you'd like to see? Like, what were the counts, and what did they base that upon, if that will help? Because we don't know the crashes, I don't have that information. They will have that for you probably, and they, and that's.
But they're not, they're not there yet. But the crashes aren't there yet. The driveway's not there.
No, but they base it on, it's based on a study in that area. So when crashes are within a quarter mile, they take those into account based on your opponent's traffic. I mean, I'm just saying, if you wanna see it, that's what I would think you could provide.
I think we'll move us to see that, give us an opportunity to review that.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we table this matter to our February meeting. And we'd be provided with the information that Ms. Chair mentioned by email prior to that meeting, so we have time to say it. That's my motion.
Chair, second.
Can you state the date and time for me? That would be February the tenth o'clock, excuse me. That's about to double check it, to see if you have followed the same thirty-day guideline that the planning board and board adjustment had followed for twenty-eight days.
Okay, and now, I'm out of the public hearing, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need that, because we're not gonna amend anything, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, right?
Since you're setting the date and time, you don't have to advertise it yet.
Good. That's my motion.
That is the motion, deserve a second.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
The motion, have a second.
Could you restate the motion?
Do you want me to restate it, or what do you want me to say?
Motion to table the public hearing for the rezoning until February the third, ten a.m.
Do we need the first public hearing, man? Is that, is that gonna cause a problem with advertising? So the public's getting in my way?
By stating that you're continuing.
Okay, so we're good there, okay. And also, for us to be provided with the documentation that the gentleman spoke about on the, or truck, we spoke about on the traffic count and the driveway permits.
This is four of the four discussions, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioner Owens did not make this part of his motion that I seconded, but I think it would be helpful if Mr. Lassiter could get some info from the fire department about how many calls we've been to there, in that intersection right there. Or, or share, maybe get with First Sergeant to see how many already incidents have been in that area. It doesn't have to be official, just, you know, something from the local highway patrol or the fire department. I know somebody's gonna have those records, just to have for our February meeting, if you would. If that, that's okay, my fellow board members?
Yep.
Agreed. Call it a day. That is the motion, you vote. All right. All in favor, motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? If you're none, motion fine. When they ask to take a adjournment for five minutes, it'll be a five-minute recess. Please be back in five minutes if you want. Come back in order, please. Would they say it? Would they say it? Number seven, Oldwood Business. Have they owned Community Center?
As indicated, Dr. Williams, Chair Felton, Chair Freeman and I met, discussed Medical Center, then we also talked about Community Center. And after probably about an hour-long discussion, it was decided that the majority of the board of education was not in favor of relinquishing the Community Center to the Board of Commissioners. So we have discussed, Chair Freeman and I discussed with them, why it came up in reference to the Senior Center. And Dr. Williams and Chair Felton were both agreeable to increasing senior activities at the Community Center. They said that they would be willing to talk to their staff, and they invited the two of us to come back and meet with Lou Leure as well, to share some of the ideas and suggestions that came about from the SAM Center study that was conducted a few years ago about programs. And we even talked about a few ideas beyond arts and crafts. And they also talked about how they could market the Community Center as a whole better than what they are currently doing to also increase youth sports participation for the programs that they currently have. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Not really anything, and however, just to bring to attention to everyone as well as our board, and that is that the contract is two thousand twenty-four, if I'm not mistaken. And so we'll review it, we talked about reviewing it again in two thousand twenty-four.
That was the, my mind just went blank, the park and recreation grant.
Any comments or concerns?
Not just trying to make improvements, you know, sounds like that's gonna be beneficial to all the citizens.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Personnel policy discussion.
We, we have reviewed that some time ago, and tabled it. We're still reviewing it, and however, I think there's some, some language in there that kind of jumps out. And we need to go over that. So I'm gonna ask, possibly table it again, simply because many times I've had to mention, still, Gates County is a still Gates County is a current county. And we've either, uh, on what kind of, there's some verbiage in there, some words.
That, that has been corrected in the one that would be approved. I thought we had found also. If you found, if, no, I can't call now, I'm sorry. If you have found that, if you'll let me know, I can correct that because there was only one section that was adopted from FERC.
It would be, uh, I'm in favor of tailing it. Took that break while I was getting close, I've not done well. And I'd, I'd be in favor of tailing that to another meeting when we discuss it a little bit better. And I appreciate. You make that in the motion. I appreciate the cooperation.
I think that's what we.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion if you're favor that to the next meeting.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Both on the, on the motion to table list until next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sign, none. That would be table personnel policy discussion. And we do want to say that it hasn't been, uh, it was not voted down exactly at the timetable of the discussion, if I quote, it was taken or was actually voted down, correct?
Well, there's no action taken.
No action taken.
Right, no action taken, so it was not, uh, this thing's.
And this personnel policy will, will not affect about six departments. It doesn't affect the President's Dean's Office, the Sheriff's Department.
No, it depends on which section.
Well, about hiring and firing.
Correct.
And the, um, soil and water county extension, DSS, um, I think I got them all, about that hiring and firing because they are done by.
The elected officials.
Well, county extension because of boards. Soil and water, it's all.
Any other discussion? All right, uh, under new business, uh, first item sheriff's office cell firearms.
Well, Chief Deputy Yonk's coming forward. In your packet, you do have General Statute 20-187.2B, which is highlighted either in yellow or gray, which states active members of North Carolina State Law Enforcement Agency, upon changing type of weapons, may purchase the weapon worn or carried by such member at price, which shall be the average yield to the state from the sale of similar weapons during the preceding year. And Chief Deputy Yonk can explain that farther.
Good evening. I took our old weapons. These weapons are approximately 12, 15 years old. These are first generation Smith and Wesson M&amp;P 40s. I took it, took two to live with City Palm. They looked at, and the most they would give me for it was a hundred bucks. And the reason why there was never a weapons maintenance program instilled in the sheriff's office. I am in a, I am a Smith and Wesson M&amp;P armor, certified by Smith and Wesson. I have taped, torn these weapons down, and you have springs, trigger springs, that are so rusted, it's not even funny. I'm, I was surprised they could qualify with it this last year. So I did give these fair, I also took it to lawmen's up in Raleigh, where we normally trade our guns. Lawmen's wouldn't give us no more than a hundred for it as well. These guns are designed to have the internal components replaced every five years. They have never been replaced. When I was in probation, the internal components for these guns cost about $300. It was easier to buy a new gun. When I retired from probation, I turned my weapons away. Actually, I bought my weapon, but their contract for these five years are up, they're switching to Glock. So we're, we bought new CIGs this year. One of the first things we did when we took over, we looked at all the equipment. The weapons were out of one, like I said, badly maintained, so we got new handguns this past year. We bought the six-hour P320s, nine mils. It's cheaper ammo, and it's, it's a lot more cost-effective. These weapons here were proposing to sell back to the officers at a price of $100, which is what the average is from the two places I went and got it on trade.
And, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the general statute, um, this is allowed, is that correct, County Manager, what you sent to us?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, how would, if, with, with that, there's how many, how many deputies are in the room?
There's, with myself included, there's 14.
And there's, it's 14 guns?
Yes, sir. Well, actually, it's 13 guns because my new investigator and my, they were, they qualified with the CIGs. They were never issued an M&amp;P.
So looking, looking at what we presented, could, could one deputy buy, is they can buy the one there?
The one that's.
And, and it would have to go through the FFL or anything like that?
That's right. All, they would still have to present us with a pistol permit and a photo ID.
But these guns could sit in there right now, but.
They're sitting in my evidence vault right now.
And what would, what would the line item, where would that money go to Mountain County Manager? Is that a special line item?
No, that's a line that Ken would have to speak with the officers about because we do not reimburse lines anymore as we've done in the past.
But that would just add something else to their budget.
No, not to their budget.
Not to theirs, come back to the county.
Yeah, right.
And you said it's 13?
Right.
So $1,300, and they're probably just sitting there?
And we're, with the ammunition, Sheriff and I, we discussed, so with the ammunition to the officers as well, and the fair price right now is about $10 a box. Because they did, these, this ammunition is about, some are four years old, some are three years old. They got them in 2017, 2018.
Can I ask a question? If someone does not want the gun, let's say it was 13, you six of them, that means seven of them are not.
We'll take it to the lawman's or somewhere and trade it in for a new, something.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, we allow a sheriff or his to, to pursue for the sale of firearms not being used in all.
Motion on the floor, deserve a second. All in favor, this motion for sale of firearms?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, all members.
Thank you.
Budget amendments.
No, Commissioner, no, four, four.
No, no, ma'am, that was a new entitled, I mean, agenda.
Okay, sorry.
That was outrun.
I should have, uh, three budget amendment, secret package, 14 through 16. Budget Amendment 14 is to move money around out of the county auto expenses for the sheriff's department, for the approved promotions in the last meeting. And this will cover, um, the salary increase, the by-go retirement, and your supplemental retirement.
May I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment number 14?
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Aye, second.
Budget Amendment 15 is to move the $17 out of workers' compensation to cover an increase in dues.
Your motion as pertaining to budget provision 50.
Motion to be approved, Amendment 15.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? None. Budget provision 15.
Budget, uh, Amendment 16, this is additional funds received by JCPC for the alternatives for youth grant.
Okay, so this is additional money coming into the county?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment number 16.
Drove second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so? Budget provision 16.
Thank you.
Yes, the next item is the Economic Improvement Council Community Centers' SLOT grant application. This is presented to us each year. Basically, the certification states that you have received the information, that you've been made aware of it, and then to provide any feedback. It is not necessarily to approve or disapprove the grant.
I have some feedback I would like to add, Ed. Um, well, it's August 2, 2019, I don't know if that's the page or the night number. Um, I know the program has started, and I've asked this question before, about transportation, and it says program services and it issues transportation. Transportation provides, provides bus transportation in most counties. That is true, but it does not provide transportation in Gates County. And I want to know what the criteria is that they decide to not provide us money for transportation, and they provide it for other counties.
And I recall you bringing up that before, ma'am.
And I just don't think it's fair.
I agree.
So I want to know what the criteria is. To make that rational step, rationalization.
This, this is going. Is the, uh, I'm sure we have to submit fresh documentation for the grant.
Do we have to submit one?
And they could submit fresh documentation each year?
EIC submits the information. The county does not provide any information.
And the EIC just changed their board in the last year, where we don't even have to appoint anybody.
Correct.
Do you think that would be the place to go? The EIC would pass them?
Well, that's who this is from, so yes, that's who the question came back to.
So, so to figure back on Ms. Hopper, we're not going to, I don't like representing anything, especially if they got issues. I think I would, I would comment back to them, you know, Ms. Hopper, you could elaborate more maybe, or disagree, or, um, I think we need to get the director, Mr. Mason, to come to our meetings and answer the questions. You said we had it before, and it, it wouldn't answer, so I would vote back to them, or our response back to them is we would like the representative to come, speak to us, but then we know we get our questions answered.
I must have, uh, question.
Mr. Williams?
No, Mr. Williams is always very helpful. It's the, um, director.
Be it Mr. Mason.
Mason, he has been here too, uh, and his answer for us last time was he did that with us.
Is that right? I don't.
How many goes to that?
He issued, he didn't show up.
Now, I did notice some board directors, Attorney Thomas Wood, who has an office very close to his courthouse, and would be easy to touch.
Well, and, and like you said, I wonder, question, looking at the minutes from their public hearings, it's, it's general, you know, it's, uh.
This week we get the women, what we say.
Uh, Gates County had four meetings, and I think according to their minutes provided, that we had four meetings, but they were located in other counties.
Yeah, there's no one on the board, I noticed, missed.
Well, I, I think, I, I hear you, Commissioner, on Mr. Mason, but it might, it might be a simple, a simple answer that we could get if we just follow, if we follow up on it. And, I mean, he might get answered the question, and he might say, I, I never noticed that. We could take care of that, and move it's done.
I'm not, I'm not.
Not, if I may, not according to, to the response that was provided to Patrice in the past, when she inquired from, as the director of GIPS, it was basically that we were too spread out and they weren't wanting to use their money for that issue.
Is it a reimbursement?
I, I don't know, but I do know that they provide, or they used to provide even funding or transportation in Washington County.
They have the, the Quinones County too.
They have a bus for, for Quinones County.
Probably runs within the town limits, or maybe a mile outside or something like that, because it doesn't seem the same situation.
But Quinones is long now, but it's not wide enough, but, um, I, but we just need what the criteria is.
But we're not, I mean, it doesn't matter if we agree or disagree.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't even have to understand it, it's just, they're just letting us know. But I, I, I agree with Ms. Hopper. Why can't everybody else get it? Why can't we get it? And I, I mean, and he's, he can say what he wants to, you know, but, you know, I, I love for him and, and Mr. Williams, who's the chair, to come to our next meeting and answer Ms. Hopper's question in front of us, say, why, why can't Gates County get something? Everybody else is.
Mr. Chair, can we direct our county manager?
I believe that would be, uh, like I said, we never have gotten an answer, and I was just, I was looking at some of his professional experience, again, to kind of enlighten myself on, on his background. But yes, I think we should, uh, in Ken, we're, we're kind of actually to contact him and, and invite him to our February meeting, and then we can ask some good questions. And then have an opportunity to look at him and see what he thinks.
Something we can put on him again, at the very bottom of the meeting. We don't, I won't.
I was thinking that, as I was looking over this, the appetites for these meetings, if you look, and they have appetites, and they can do the Daily Deflect, the Daily Fan, the Rocky Mike Telegram, Bertie Ledger, Joanne Harold, Dublin Times, Farmville Enterprise, Quinones Weekly, Harper and Weekly, Times Reader, Winston Enterprise. What, do I, do I see a Gates County index?
I remember that question was also addressed last year.
That's, when you look at the minutes, we had four meetings in Gates County.
Well, it's, but it might be more people could chant if we, they knew about it, or we, something. I just think they advertise in everybody else's.
And they also note in their minutes, in their report, that their, the satellite offices in the county. Do we know what the hours are?
No.
So we have some questions.
All about it.
So maybe it does need to be covered.
But they do have a space that they had requested to use, and we gave them permission, still the EIC building, where they've always, as we call that building, it was still up there, but I do not know when they were ever there.
So we'll get some more information coming back to this, right?
Just to involve our, our public, is anyone attended in those meetings? Any of our, any of our citizens out here that is aware of this, may have attended, doctor license?
This is the Economic Improvement Council. Now, if you know, right off the top of your head, the grant is $298,926. How long is that spread?
I know London, London Watson, London Watson, this application.
Did we need to add the motion to the fair, or we just?
Yeah, we, we asked Mountain County manager, she's, she has.
We directed her to read something.
We have, I guess, uh, considered by. I believe, Commissioner Jones, uh, item number 12, if anything else on the EIC? Uh, item number 12 on the general resolution celebrating Hazel Bass's 100th birthday. I think Commissioner Jones may want to present that resolution.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. What we have for.
What we have for us is a resolution celebrating Miss Hazel Bass's one hundredth birthday, and I will read the resolution. Whereas Hazel Bass was born on November twenty-fourth, nineteen nineteen, in Hobbsville, North Carolina, to Tommy and Ella A. Spotty, and whereas Miss Bass recently celebrated her one hundredth birthday on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and whereas Miss Bass has lived a life dedicated to family, as she married the late Lonnie Bass for fifty-seven years, and had four children, ten grandchildren, nineteen great-grandchildren, and nineteen great-great-grandchildren, and whereas Miss Bass continues to amaze everyone with her good health, sense of humor, and hobbies, which include music, puzzles, and housekeeping, and whereas, as Miss Bass reflects upon a century of memories and accomplishments, we hope she is filled with joy and optimism, and whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners hopes Miss Bass is blessed with good health and happiness throughout her one hundredth year and beyond, and now, therefore, we give resolve, the Gates County Board of Commissioners wishes to extend to Miss Hazel Bass a very one-hundred happy birthday. Be it further resolved that this resolution adopted this sixth day of January twenty-twenty shall be entered into the minutes of the Gates County Board of Commissioners and a copy presented to Miss Bass. She is, um, not able to be with us tonight, um, but I will be presenting the signed copy to her this week with her family members in attendance in Hobbsville.
Let's give her a round of applause.
Does anyone here know Hazel Bass? For me, I don't.
I have some of her grandchildren.
And we'd like to address, uh...
We have to have a motion for that, we haven't had a motion.
Well, I believe the resolution passed.
Have you, have you anything? Okay. Have we had a motion in the past to accept the resolution?
I make the motion that we accept this resolution celebrating Miss Hazel Bass's one hundredth birthday.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Give them none, accept it. The last item, um, but not the worst item by any means, uh, is a resolution, uh, and a comment and a letter from the Democratic Party, uh, to the Gates County Board of Commissioners. We met as Democratic Party in this courtroom this past Saturday, and with that, Chairman Democratic Party Andrew Saunders and the Executive Committee appointed and recognized, Dr. Riddick, to take, uh, Commissioner Jordan's spot as the former, as his seat as county commissioner. At that meeting, was asked if anyone else was interested, and we break that forward tonight as well. If not, then, uh, then we recognize this letter, and we would like to, to, uh, to now offer that as a commissioners, if anyone wants to make a motion as pertaining to this, what the Executive Committee has brought forward to us.
Mr. Chair, um, if you have time?
No, just go.
Okay, um, according to General Statute, County Manager provided us, um, due to the passing of Commissioner Jordan, the way the term worked out, commissioners have sixty days to appoint an individual to fill the spot. Fill the spot is not really a good word, um, it's be hard to fill Henry's shoes, um, he's at a lock for the county and the citizens over, over his terms as a county commissioner. But looking at the Democratic Executive Committee, which had presented with, to us information, I would like to make the motion that Miss, Dr. Althea Riddick be appointed and sworn in at our February meeting as the Sunbury Commissioner, to fill Commissioner Jordan's, the late Commissioner Jordan's position.
Do I have a sec?
She will be appointed tonight and sworn in.
Yeah, sworn in February.
I'll second.
There's a motion, and a second on the floor, any discussion?
I think we need to, for the record, I think we have to say unexpired term. Thank you.
End the motion.
Good motion.
So you want to add?
I'll add that one.
And Commissioner Hoffman seconds that, and then as far as discussion, one thing that, uh, that my colleagues and myself offered, and I talked to, uh, Mr. Saunders about this, and that was, we wanted to offer this to Commissioner Jordan's wife, uh, she was very active in, uh, not only in our commissioners meeting, but certainly looking after Commissioner Jordan, so we knew that she had kept up with what was going on day by day in every meeting, and she was advised of him or letting him know because of his condition, therefore we wanted that to be known, that we felt like that she should fill him until the election. Mr. Saunders advised me that he had talked with her, and she did not wish to do that, and so that's why we're here with this, and that's why we have a letter, so thank you, Dr. Riddick, for, for telling us all about yourself this past Saturday, so, um, there's a motion on the floor, uh, I have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, give them none, so be, so moved until February. Congratulations. And Ms. Riddick, please. Comments, citizens comment? We have one. Mr. Carter?
We know Martin Research is going to set million.
All right, hey.
There were cameras out there saying she followed it down, but it's gone.
Oh, no, I was looking for a heart, but I didn't have it, it was with me. The only thing I had was, uh, my name is Milton Carter from Hobbsville, of course, uh, the dental office and the gyms people, I don't know, I'm still against, you know, going, giving that to the school like that, um, I don't think, you know, have a weak subject system there, as it is gyms, there's only a few people, if you give it to the schools, you make more people, it's gonna cost you more money for the subject system. But, um, gyms got a track record, of course, in this county, in Hamilton County, for a long time now, they've been moved from place to place, to place, to place, and I think you should probably give them a home there. Besides that, the quarter percent sales tax that Joe brought up earlier, of course, I'm against that too. I, you know, want to generate money for the county, but I also want to say to citizens here that spending their money on the county, a little bit of money, oh, that sixteen cent tax off personal property tax here a while back, and, uh, that's enough for a while. Uh, let me see, moving on to the, uh, dollar general store there, uh, the forty-five mile an hour speed limit that they proposed for that area, uh, I would also maybe ask them, where are they gonna start that at? Coming north down, uh, thirty-two, and coming around that, down into that bottom and around that corner, uh, I think you should probably start that from the county line on, just to keep people, you know, down. Uh, the other thing was, community center, uh, I didn't know if y'all knew it or not, but any kid that's spending from school is not allowed to use the community center, uh, for any kind of recreation whatsoever during their suspended time, and I don't know if that's something y'all do, or the school board, but, uh, kids need to do something even though they are suspended, and there's not much here to do. And then the other thing was, is there a possibility of getting a DMV or a license plate bureau here to generate money, instead of just the bus, what, once a month or something? Does that thing still come here? It does still come here? Some kind of license plate, plate bureau, I mean, Hartford County's got one, uh, Ed Good's got one, just about every county around here, Hoski, et cetera, I don't know if that'd be feasible or not, but it's an idea, and that's all I have, thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you, breaking that forward. Any other comments? If not, uh, Commissioner comments, and, uh, starting far end with Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's good to see so many faces tonight, um, keep, keep coming. It's our first meeting without Commissioner Jordan, it was an honor and privilege to share the table with him the last twelve months, um, shared the Department of Social Services' board table with him for a couple of years, a few years, and if, if anybody has listened or been to a county commissioner meeting over the last few years, if you drive through Sunbury, where he represented, and you're coming from Suffolk, or, and you look on the left at Sunbury School, if you don't look at that school every time you pass it, and think of Henry Jordan, you haven't kept up with anything that's gone on in the county for the last few years, um, I, I hope and pray that something comes out of that, and, and Henry will respond to them down on it, when it does happen, because he has really pushed for that, or has been a sitewant for a number of years now, and, and, and like I said, anybody that, that has kept up with, with Gates County business and politics knows that that's one thing that, that he has been very adamant about over the years, um, he was a great steward for, for housing, and served, serving on the DSS for that, knows some of the things that he was very passionate about, it was, it was an honor and a privilege to sit beside him and share the table for the last twelve months. Again, thank you, everybody, for coming, I, I will say, uh, we don't comment directly on citizen comments, but I think that license plate agency will probably run, so the county would not have any say so with that, I think I just saw that Washington County was giving the first one, so it would take a private citizen actually starting that business up, it's not something that the county, um, could initiate, but again, please, um, thank you for coming, if you have comments, concerns, questions, complaints, let us know, that's, that's what we're here for, and have a good night.
Um, thank you all for coming, and if, um, you know, when Mr. Jordan was here, we always were pleased, and I, you had the most people tonight, and I had the most people from Hockley, um, but of course, we have reason for being here tonight, um, as you well know, Mr. Jordan had put his heart and soul into the work for this county, uh, whether it was the DSS, the housing, his church, um, the schools, or whatever, he left us a great legacy, he left a high mark for us to try to maintain that level of dedication to all our citizens here in the county, and we need, I will have to work each and every day very hard to, um, try to reach, and I don't know that I can, the bar that Mr. Jordan's, um, established. It is cold and flu season, as we see, I think we have someone contaminated down here, um, but anyway, um, please try to take care of yourself.
And if you have any complaints, I can see Jack.
But, uh, please take care of yourself, watch out for your neighbors, um, we have people, elderly people, they can get dehydrated very quickly, um, and with, um, all these bugs going around, just take care and drink plenty of liquids and get plenty of rest. That's my prescription for you guys.
All right, thank you. I'm Mike O'Neal here. Uh, I really appreciate this board and this group putting up with my situation tonight. At four-thirty this afternoon, um, I told my wife to wake me up at five o'clock to see if I was gonna be able to come to this meeting, and, uh, so she did, and, uh, I was feeling just like this, but I told her, I said, you know, my good friend Henry Jordan made his way here for this seat a lot of times, a lot of people stayed at home, but he made the effort, uh, because he loved this county so much, so much, um, so I had to call him. I met Henry before I was a commissioner, and we were working on a habitat. Were you met in, in Corpiet? I'd never met the gentleman, but when I met him, I said, who are you? So I had a little conversation. But, uh, but we worked on a project in Corpiet, uh, on two separate weekends, I was there, Henry was there, and, uh, I mean, just a, a great, a great guy, I knew, I liked him the minute I saw him, and that liked turned him to love, and, um, after Henry's mom passed away, I called him that Tuesday following, uh, her passing, and Henry was to pass the next Friday, as we all know, and Henry, not the first lesson Henry ever taught me, but he taught me a lesson that day, and it was about passing, it was about death. I said something about his mother, and he chuckled a little bit, and he said, yeah, and he just started describing what she was doing at that very moment, and she's sitting at the feet of Jesus right now praising Him, and he said, you know what else she's doing, Brother Jack? I said, what's that, Henry? She said, he, she's praying for her boy, praying for her boy, and the lesson that he taught me was, there is, you know, we hear certain, all the time about, you know, it's a celebration, and it, and it really should be, and at that moment, was a real clear lesson that we know the Lord, and we're actually, and it's starting with the Lord, that we have a reason to be joyful, we have a reason to be celebrated. And, um, when Henry passed, I went online and sent a message about what I just shared with you to the family, through Crocker Funeral Home, and, uh, and it's a real lesson, it's a lesson that I won't forget, it's a lesson I will not forget, Henry, um, was my friend, my brother, I, and of course, it's not the only time I ever told Henry, I was at his house one day, and I said, Henry, I love you, I said, Henry, did you hear me, and I love you, and I'll never forget that man, I'll never forget that man, thank you.
Thank you, Jack, uh, obviously tonight, and, and certainly throughout our lives, we're gonna be thinking and remembering and have good memories of Henry Jordan, uh, Dr. Henry Jordan, and, uh, and he, uh, he certainly puts some on all of us, I had to go back a little further than Jack, when I first met Henry, I met Henry in West Lagoon at the Buckland, uh, school in the Jim Nation, on Sunday afternoons, sometimes we could not play a gazeball because, uh, Mr. Perry would lock the doors, however, the coach over at Buckland would unlock the doors, and we could all go in there and play, and we had basketball games on Sunday afternoons, West Lagoon, Henry Jordan, and when I came back to this county that I grew up in and saw Henry, and we talked about times and impacts, and, uh, I knew that he loved basketball, but I don't know, I thought he loved it anymore than I did, but he certainly did, well, a great man, we're all fortunate for him to have been a colleague with us, so, uh, I thank all of you, because I, I look at some of you that I've seen various places, and I know how much you thought of Commissioner Jordan, but how much he brought to the county, and how much he cared about housing, how much he cared about people, all the time, and if you listened to what was going on here, and that's why I knew his wife would know, if you listened to what was going on here, he was always, always pushing for better housing and better things for Gates County first, always first. Yes, sir?
Yes, I have another question.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
I'm, I'm Claude Oates, you know, pastor, and I'm a small, you should have asked for church, and Henry was...
Can you come to the podium, Dr. Hoffman?
My dad taught me how to call a hog, so I know how. I will, he'll be...
It would, it would be good for the record. Yes, sir.
I wasn't saying that, I feel like you all started bringing up how, how dear friend and colleague of ministry, Henry Jordan, he's such a delightful fellow. and colleague of ministry, Henry Jordan, he's such a delightful fellow, and we've known him all of my life, and as a matter of fact, we played under the church at Blanchard Road, and his parents were remembers of that, his, uh, mother was, but temporary, period. But I want to commend you, and thank you so much for honoring our request in terms of putting Sister Dr. Riddick in position of fulfilling that unexpired term. And I want to suggest also, as it's a token of our appreciation, if you might consider, because when I was a county commissioner for the county, I had the section pathway to name Dr. H.J. Mitchell, when I was kind of, had to negotiate with the governor to do that because of Thad Ull, but that we got it done. So I'd like to suggest to you, recommend potentially, that you name a section of thirty-two in honor of Henry Lee Jordan, as a momentum, as a, as a continuation of our remembering him as a great commissioner, a great preacher, great man of God, who was honorable, the whole parts of, just to surprise my thoughts on that, because I think it would, it would bode you well to recognize that as a, as a, as a method of, you know, letting, letting continue to be, and the county people love so much, so thank you for, for listening to me.
Thank you, and for the. All right, Andy, uh. Uh, if there's anything else, we will, uh, go to closed session, so. I, I put on my glasses, make it. Closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute, one forty-three dash three-one-eight point one-one eight, reference is three illegal, and.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second. Make a favor. All right, come out of a closed session?
Yes, sir, I'll make the motion, we come out of closed session.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you opposed, like sign? Here it done?
Mr. Chair, sir, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
And, Mr. Chair, I want halfway to second, Commissioner Owen's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you opposed, like sign? We are adjourned.